So we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mary Lee, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody. We have a couple special proclamations here this evening, recognitions. And I see we have the Dublin Chamber of Commerce, the 40th anniversary. We'll have a presentation to Breann Taylor, the Board President. And I see we have the officers and a number of the Board of Directors here. This is a who's who of Dublin, actually. We appreciate all of you coming out here and sorry we were running a little bit behind. So with that, I would ask Breann to come forward. And we will present this proclamation. Go ahead, get your photos. You want me in there? Really? Okay, well, you guys can stay there while I present this if you like. Welcome again. So we have a proclamation. Whereas the Dublin Chamber of Commerce will celebrate its 40th anniversary in 2015. And whereas the Dublin Chamber began as an all-volunteer organization with 37 members in 1975, and has grown to 1,700 members, making it the largest suburban chamber of commerce in the state of Ohio. It's pretty impressive. Whereas during the past four decades, the Dublin Chamber has advocated on behalf of businesses in our community. Whereas the Chamber has forged a strong partnership with the city of Dublin, helping to welcome new companies, provide resources to establish businesses, and encourage young professionals to get involved in our community through its next-gen Dublin program. Whereas the Chamber has celebrated business leaders through programs such as the Businessperson of the Year and President's Awards, recognized people and companies that have brought national acclaim to the city with the Spotlight Dublin Award, and rewarded Dublin schools, students, and staff members throughout the Community Champion Awards. Whereas the Chamber adds to our vibrant community spirit through events like Taste of Dublin, and offers our corporate partners opportunities to engage and network through Business After Hours, and network Dublin events, and golf outings as well. We like that. Whereas the Chamber helps develop employees and young professionals through professional training sessions and programs like Lunch and Learns and the Leadership Academy. Whereas the Dublin Chamber has been professionally guided by its Executive Director, Marjorie Amoros, over the course of 40 years, now therefore I, Michael H. Keenan, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of City Council, do hereby congratulate the Dublin Chamber of Commerce and its leadership on its 40th anniversary of advocating on behalf of the city of Dublin and its business community. Congratulations. And I suspect, so Breann, if you'd like to say a few words, and I'm sure Marjorie, we'll want to hear from her as well. So I'll give, I'll present this to you.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of our entire Board of Directors, and most importantly, our member businesses, thank you very much for the recognition. We consider it a blessing to be able to have such a great partner in our city government and have been so successful over the years, thanks to that great partnership and collaboration. So it's my honor to represent and introduce Marjorie Amoros, who's really the heart and soul of our Dublin Chamber. And she's going to say a few words. March.
Heart and soul, wow. Hi. I am Marjorie Amoros. And I wanted you to know that this proclamation is very touching. It has been my pleasure to serve this Chamber and the membership for nearly 40 years. That's a long time, but it's been a wonderful ride. You can see with the many current Board members that are present here tonight, our leadership has remained strong over all of those years. Forty years ago, the Chamber was a green rotary dial telephone on our kitchen counter. When it rang, it meant business. We were all volunteers, excuse me, but we were never, but we never lost sight of things to come. Everyone worked toward the betterment of the village. In 1986, the Chamber sponsored the Dublin Connection. That was an event that opened the 161 bridge that reconnected the east and the west side of the river. Some people are nodding around here and they remember that. I like that. That was sponsored by the Dublin Chamber of Commerce, and obviously it was the east and west reunited. We had 4,000 to 5,000 people attend that event, all volunteer. In 1987, we found that Dublin had enough registered voters to be a city. So we became the city of Dublin. And in 1988, Chamber did the city party, again, all volunteers. The Chamber sponsored and marshaled parades, tree lighting ceremonies, the State of the City presentation. We were involved in every aspect of this developing city. When the city wanted to do a survey, the business community, they asked the Chamber to head that up, the one-on-one interviews with our existing business leaders. Oh, I'm kind of talking into that, aren't I? With our existing business leaders. So the Chamber, again, provided all kinds of quality volunteers, just the kinds of people that we have here tonight. In the same process, we became the largest suburban chamber in the state of Ohio. Like I said, strong leadership, but the love of this city has never wavered. We hope that you can all attend the anniversary party on October 20th at the Embassy Suites and celebrate this wonderful ride. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marjorie. And I've had the privilege of having a number of ribbon cuttings with you these last couple of years. I know some of our other mayors have also spent time with you cutting ribbons with those big scissors. Yeah, you bet. Okay, we have another proclamation here this evening. Dublin Arts Council Exhibition by Alfred Tabor, Holocaust survivor, titled "Hate doesn't work." Alfred Tabor is an inspirational central Ohio sculptor and Holocaust survivor. Now aged 95, he endured captivity as a Russian POW and numerous other atrocities. Emerging a positive gentle soul with the desire to spread his message, hatred doesn't work. Tabor's artwork is found in nearly 500 private collections and museums worldwide, and an exhibition of his works will open in Dublin at the end of September. So I will present this. Welcome. So this proclamation on behalf of City Council. Whereas the Dublin Arts Council is bringing the artwork of a 95-year-old Holocaust survivor, Alfred Tabor, to its gallery for an exhibit, which will be on display September 29th through December 18th. Whereas the exhibition will promote the message "Hate doesn't work" while using innovative technology to engage visitors with his artwork and his message. And whereas Alfred, born Alfred Goldstein in Conyor, Hungary in 1920, is a Russian POW survivor who emerged a positive gentle soul, who believes his life was spared so that he could create sculptures to capture the essence of humanity and to spread a message of empathy, understanding, and peace. Whereas although a talented gymnast, Tabor was denied formal training due to his Jewish faith. After years of teaching himself gymnastics, he qualified for the 1936 Summer Olympics Hungarian gymnastics team, but was disqualified when the team discovered his heritage. Whereas in 1940, he was forced into slave labor for a Hungarian Army Labor Battalion. During this time, he was captured by the Soviet Army and spent six years in a Siberian prison camp. Of the 273 men in his labor, of the 273 men in his labor battalion sent to the prisoner-of-war camp, he was one of two to survive. As an artist, he was able to draw portraits of his captors, which they deemed a valuable skill. Whereas after his release in 1947, Tabor discovered that his extended family, only he and his brother Andre had survived both the Holocaust and the war. They changed their last names to honor their late brother, Tabor Goldstein, who was executed in another prison camp. His parents and 82 other family members perished in the Auschwitz concentration camp. Whereas after the Hungarian Revolution in 1956, he with his wife and two children immigrated to the U.S. Although a self-taught artist, he credits his life experiences as his primary instruction. His artwork is now found in nearly 500 private collections and museums worldwide, and a number of his large-scale public artworks are on view in central Ohio, including at the Ohio Governor's Mansion and Franklin Park. Whereas the exhibit made possible through funding from PNC Arts Alive and a grant from Puffin Foundation West, as well as ongoing support from the City of Dublin and Ohio Arts Council, will include artwork from schoolchildren as they interpret the "Hate Doesn't Work" message. Now therefore I, Michael H. Keenan, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 29th, as Alfred Tabor Day in the City of Dublin, in recognition of the talent and important messages Tabor conveys through his artwork, and encourage everyone to visit the "Hate Doesn't Work" exhibit at the Dublin Arts Council. Congratulations.
So thank you, Mayor Keenan, and members of City Council, and also PNC Bank for recognizing the artistic value and incredible messages delivered by Alfred Tabor and his exhibition "Hate Doesn't Work." Mr. Tabor can't be with us this evening, but I'm sure that I speak for him when I thank you for your generosity in bringing his artwork to Dublin. Mayor Keenan, I will personally deliver the proclamation to Alfred, and I know that he will be most appreciative. I'd like to further thank PNC for awarding Dublin Arts Council a competitive and prestigious PNC Arts Alive grant, allowing us to recognize Alfred Tabor and to curate this exhibition, which includes 14 sculptures, a video feedback booth, a poster contest, augmented reality videos of the artist, a pay-it-forward activity, and field trips and workshops for schoolchildren. Mr. Tabor's message of hope and love for all humanity is inspiring and is delivered unforgivably through his artwork and his stories. As we approach Yom Kippur, the Jewish Day of Atonement, which begins tomorrow at sundown, Alfred Tabor's message of inclusion and tolerance is especially timely. I would like to extend a personal invitation to all of you to join us Tuesday, September 29th, at Dublin Arts Council for an opening reception for the exhibition from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Due to the generosity of our supporters, the exhibition and activities are offered free of charge, and all are welcome. Thank you for all you do to make the arts accessible, and in this case, to use art as a vehicle for social tolerance, acceptance, and change. Now I'd like to introduce Evan Eichert, who is the Branch Manager at Dublin PNC. Evan.
Thank you. And on behalf of PNC, I want to thank you for the opportunity to participate and for your valued partnership. At PNC, we know the impact that art can make in our communities and are dedicated to ensuring that great artists such as Mr. Tabor are supported. Through PNC Arts Alive, a multi-year $2.5 million initiative of the PNC Foundation, I'm pleased to be here today to assist in increasing arts access and engagement. Thank you.
Thank you both. David, thank you for continuing to bring such fine programming on the heels of our Vietnam exhibit that just ended. And you continue to do a great job up there. We appreciate it. I know the community does as well. That will bring us to the consent agenda. I'm sorry, citizen comments. And I see that Mr. Maurer signed up. Welcome, Mr. Maurer.
I was absent from the last council meeting. But it occurs to me, why do I have to feel accountable to anybody for my dog and pointer show? I have a constitutional question, but it occurs to me, and it's obvious my thinking has slowed down. I think before I put the constitutional question, I think the city has a charter, a constitution. And if you have it here in the building, could you give, oh, you have it right there.
We have a charter.
Okay, well, thank you. I won't work on it right now. I'll study this now and then check my own question against it to see whether I need to bring it up next time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Maurer. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to have removed from that agenda? Hearing none? Is there a motion to approve the actions for the four items listed?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ann.
Ms. Ale.
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes. Very good. We have a second reading, but I understand you want to weigh in on this, Dana, on 65 days 15?
Yeah, actually, Mayor, we've got a few more. We filed the final plat. There are some property conveyances that need to occur prior to hearing this ordinance. So we just ask for postponement till the next council meeting.
Very good. Is there a motion to postpone to October 12?
So moved.
Thank you. In a second.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Ale.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
And under other, we have appointments of City Representatives in alternate to the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. Dana?
Yes, so in the past, staff has represented the city at the Delaware Regional Planning Commission. This was previously done by Gary Gunnerman, who recently retired. Staff, per the memo that we gave you, recommends that Tammy Noble be our primary representative, and then Claudia Husack, both of our planning division, be our representatives. Claudia would be the alternate. So we recommend their appointment.
Very good. Was Tammy aware of that? Did you volunteer her?
She's voluntold, I think, or something like that.
Voluntold? Okay, very good. Any council questions? If not, is there, do we need a motion for that, to appoint the representative?
So moved.
And that would be Tammy is the primary and Claudia is the secondary. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ann.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Ale.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
And we're at a record point here. Staff comments?
I just want to use my time this evening very quickly, but importantly, to recognize Steve Langworthy. Steve, as you know, has been our planning director since late 2006. Steve will be leaving the city of Dublin to that state up north where he came from. Although he's from Ohio and actually grew up next to my hometown. But, so I have a lot of stories to share. But anyway, he is going to be going back up north. He has a family up that way and a pending job. I just want to publicly recognize Steve. I want to thank him for his brilliance in the world of planning. I often have accused him of being a code wonk. He knows code like nobody knows code, and he's great at it. But I say that with the greatest admiration, Steve. He's a great leader. He has provided great leadership to our staff. He's even a better mentor than leader. It's one thing to be a leader, it's another thing to be a mentor. And Steve is certainly the epitome of what it means to be a mentor and to raise planners, I'll call it, and to teach them the way and show them the way through his example and his knowledge, skills, and ability. So Steve, I just wanted to publicly recognize you and thank you for your service to the city. And good luck to you and your future, future carings on with your grandchildren up that way, because I know that's what's gravitating him back to Michigan.
Very good. Best of luck to you, Steve. I'm sure I speak on behalf of all of council as well. Anything else, Dana? All right, Council Committee reports. Amy, planning and zoning?
We had a meeting last Thursday, and the main topic of conversation was the design for the Home Two Hotel. The developer brought two different sort of flavors for the commission to weigh in on. The commission weighed in on them, and I guess that design, those designs will be coming back to us soon for us to opine on and hopefully give the developer direction.
Very good. Admin, Rick?
Yeah, two things very quickly to remind everybody that we get a chance to see each other tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock. We have some interviews for ARB candidates. I think we have three of them, Ann, is that correct? So we'll start right at 6 o'clock. Also, I think you may have seen an email here the last day or so. You were all given a copy of the proposed 2016 council calendar. And please take a look at that. I'll try to wrap that up and finalize at the next meeting, October 3rd. That's all.
Very good. Community development, John?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance?
Nothing.
Public service, Amy? And DAC, John?
You heard it. We're excited about the Alfred Tabor exhibit. A wonderful, he's in the hospital right now, unfortunately. And I just hope he makes it out, because it's a great opportunity for everybody to meet somebody who's gone through earthly hell and has survived first the Nazis and then the communists. And as they said, he was one of the two survivors. Everybody else died at that camp in Russia. So there's a guy that has a message about living and life. It's so positive, it's amazing. It's almost the same as Mandela's comments. And while he was starving, he kept looking up and seeing starlight and beautiful evenings and everything else. So it's a real, he's a real interesting person to spend some time with. And I hope you all get that opportunity. Thank you.
John, yeah, we were hoping we'd have him here this evening, but it just, his health did not allow it, so.
Yeah.
All right. Board of Education, Greg?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Mary Lee Morpsey?
No.
And Tim, Northwest 33, Corridor?
I was not able to make the meeting last Friday, but we were otherwise represented, and I'm not aware of anything momentous occurring.
Okay, very good. Roundtable, Greg?
Yeah, I have one thing I wanted to talk about that was in our packet. And this is maybe directed at Angel. There was a document in here that goes through the Fitch Ratings. What is this document? Can you just sort of, there's a bunch of students in the room. Could you tell us what Fitch Ratings are and what this document, where it came from, what it means?
Sure. So anytime the city is going to go out to issue debt, we request a rating from one of, one of three rating agencies. There's Fitch Ratings, there's Moody's Investor Services, and Standard and Poor's. We have traditionally gone to Fitch and Moody's. The reports that were included in your packet just are the rating agency's assessment of the city based on financial data that they have received in preparation of our calls. We had a telephone call with Fitch Ratings, and we actually hosted in-person Moody's. And so that is more of a dialogue, whether it's on the phone or in person. Just talking about the management structure of the city, which is one of the criteria that you're rated on. Plans for the future of the city, what you anticipate in terms of revenue. Things that are beyond black and white numbers that they can get in any financial report. So what was included in your packet is just their summarization of the findings from those meetings. And as we outlined last time, during last week's meeting, we had received the rating from Fitch. We had not received it from Moody's. But we did receive on our general obligation bonds the highest rating from both of those rating agencies.
And those bonds are the bonds that are going to be issued, in part, to be funding the Bridge, Bridge Street developments and those types of things?
That is correct. We sold the general obligation bonds last Wednesday and had a very successful sale. We are tentatively planning for the issuance of the non-tax revenue bonds in mid-October. Those are for the two parking structures. As it pertains to the report, we did not request that Fitch rate us on those non-tax revenue bonds, because that's not something that they normally rate on. So we just requested a rating from Moody's on those non-tax revenue bonds. From Moody's, we were awarded a AA1, which is the highest rating that they award for a non-general obligation bond.
And so this information's available on the open market?
That is correct.
So if you're a person who's out thinking of purchasing bonds, these are the kinds of things you take into consideration. An independent third-party evaluating the bonds and their risk and reward and whether or not they're a good product.
Correct.
And this document, if anybody wants to really understand the financial structure of Bridge Street, at least this component of it, if you read through this, this could not be a more glowing report from an independent rating agency about a city. When you read the things that are in here, "The city's conservative budgeting and adherence to prudent fund balance policies have resulted in substantial reserves and ample financial flexibility. Exposure to income tax volatility is additionally mitigated by the city's careful monitoring of revenue performance and demonstrated willingness to adjust costs to offset shortfalls." And then it goes through and it lists just the dynamics of this community and how educated people are in the incomes. And it's almost like you couldn't buy this kind of endorsement, thank you, Amy, from an independent agency. And this is all, all taking into consideration the economic development agreement with Bridge Street and all of the other things that are going on in the city.
Yes, they were informed on the economic development agreement with Crawford Hoynes. We went into much more detail with it with Moody's, because we were requesting the rating on the non-tax revenue piece. So it was important that they knew all the nuances of how that worked. But we did touch on that with Fitch, because in order for them to make a decision on a general obligation piece, they need to understand what else is out there. So we certainly didn't skim over that by any means during our presentation to them. And yes, it was very humbling, I think, as we sat there and read that report and had the dialogue with both rating agencies. It's certainly not something we take for granted. There are a number of factors in their rating criteria that are outside of our control. But certainly, the financial practices and policies that we adhere to, our fund balance, and just the things that we can control, we do exceptionally well.
Then that's exactly what you get from reading this. And when you look at the staff that has been here for a number of years, all you guys, and I've only been here a couple of years, but all the work that you folks have done, anybody that is trying to peddle doom and gloom about this city doesn't know what they're talking about. They simply don't know what they're talking about. And if you just pick up this report from Fitch, a worldwide-recognized rating agency that has this kind of a glowing endorsement about a city, that's all you need to know. And if you read it, you notice that about 80% of our population is college-educated. They'll understand it. So is there a way we can put this on our website so people can click on it and read it? For me, this is probably the most important thing I have personally seen about the whole Bridge Street district, is this kind of endorsement from this independent agency that goes directly at the heart of the financial structure of this entire development. And it even talks about being willing to be progressive in addressing the dynamics of the housing market and all the other things that development pressures into the future, taking all of that into consideration. And if you want to know what's going on, read this document. I really think we should put it on the website and let people look at it.
We will make sure it's there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. You did well on the cross-examination, Angel. Amy?
I don't have anything other than say, congratulations, Angel and team. Very well done.
Indeed, well done. Mary Lee, I know you've got some things to share with us.
Well, first, congratulations. That's excellent. And we would have expected this to, certainly because of your management of the finances of the city, and look forward to continuation of that. I did want to point out and congratulate the Dublin Arts Council. And in our memo that we got on items of interest, you'll see where Crawford Hoynes made a $25,000 additional contribution to the R-Town grant submission. So that gives them $100,000 in total to go for, which is really helpful, I think, in their competition. As you know, it's a competitive grant. I'm going to pass out, as you are aware. I had the opportunity with Jeremiah to go to Japan and to attend the Japanese Midwest U.S. and Midwest U.S.-Japanese conference. Here's some more for Dana and staff over there during that timeframe. It was an excellent two-day conference. There was great representation from Ohio. It is the Midwest states. There's about 15 that they consider involved in the Midwest of the U.S. And Indiana had a good representation, Wisconsin and Ohio as well. The other states had representation also. They do like the governors to attend. And we had jobs Ohio staff, were the highest-ranking, I guess, staff in state government, one might say, although that's a private sector entity, but did attend. But the highlight really was two speeches that were given. One was- I guess, staff in state government, one might say, although that's a private sector entity, but did attend. But the highlight really was two speeches that were given. One was the US Ambassador, Caroline Kennedy, and she spoke about the value of the TPP. This was the New Trade Agreement, which is critically important to the Japanese-American relationship, but has not, did not include, first of all, hasn't been signed by all parties involved. So that's one of the controversial kinds of things that kept being brought up at the conference by the major speakers. It also, it did not include China and Korea, and so this was of controversy as well, because it's not inclusive of all of the Asian countries, which have a great export value to this country, for sure. So that's a bit controversial. And that was spoken to particularly by the Japanese speaker that you see here, the Minister of Economy, Trade, and Industry, who spoke to that being problematic. So I guess we have to stay tuned to see how that proceeds in terms of getting a signature by both the US and Japan. Jeremiah and I will do, we're going to be writing a report, and then we'll give that report sometime in October or November's council meeting regarding our corporate meetings, which were really important to the city of Dublin. We met with companies that are here and talked to them about, thanking them for being, choosing Dublin as their location. Primarily, they have sales offices here, and their manufacturing is done in Japan and other countries, and talked to them about their expansion and their expansion plans. All I might add, we're planning on expanding, and we'll talk more about that in our report. And then we also met with some companies that were scouted out as potential companies to move here. In attendance with Jeremiah and I was Columbus 2020, two of their staff, Deborah and Matt. So as we have a regional interest, of course, in the Japanese companies, which are many in the central Ohio area. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Tim?
Thank you. Also, congratulations to Angel and staff regarding the Fitch and Moody's rating, and I know it sounds so serving, you know, but the fact of the matter is, you know, council past and present, you know, has some responsibility and deserves some credit for the results. You know, it's ultimately council that votes on our budgets and how we spend money, and you know, I'm certainly not, you know, taking credit for that, but you know, the councils over the last several years, you know, we've taken a very thoughtful and conservative approach to our budgets and our spending and so forth, and you know, we work very hard and strive for these good ratings, and it's a point of pride for us. So congratulations to you all and staff. Steve Langworthy, I've enjoyed working with you. Thank you for your service. I can't believe it's been nine years. I remember the reception at Jane Brodigan's house, I believe, introducing you, and it doesn't seem that long ago. I don't know about you, but I have more gray hair. Anyway, you look better than ever, Steve, but good luck. Also, celebrating this evening's 40th anniversary of Dublin's Chamber of Commerce, you know, that organization and the city government complement each other well. You know, I think it's fair to say that, you know, we're both responsible for each other's success, you know, to some degree. You know, certainly council's policies, you know, I think lend a success that the Chamber, the Dublin Chamber has enjoyed over the years, and I look forward to the Chamber's representation, you know, as we welcome many new businesses to our community, particularly in the Bridge Street district area. You know, certainly welcome their support and partnership. And then finally, and unfortunately, and sadly, attended the funeral last Friday of Herb Jones. I refer to him fondly as kind of one of our founding fathers. I think, I know all of council and all of staff know Herb. You know, it's certainly sad to hear of his passing. You know, it was a nice tribute to him. You know, he's, will forever be a part of our history. You know, it's just, it's really amazing, you know, all that he has done for the community and what a part he's played, you know, his 30-plus years as a public school teacher, most of those in Columbus, if I'm not mistaken, I think a couple in Jonathan Alder, his 30-plus years with Washington Township Fire Department, state-certified fire instructor, and then, of course, all of us that have had children in Dublin schools, you know, they enjoyed Herb giving a tour of historic Dublin in third grade, I think that that occurs. So during the service, the pastor, you know, could point in different directions and within walking distance of the church. Of course, Herb was a member of Dublin Community Church, but you know, he could point in one direction to, you know, Herb's home, you know, and just right next door where the fire department was, you know, where he served and so forth. But a lot of fun stories were told about Herb as well. So anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. John?
Okay, I just want to again say congratulations to Steve on his new career up north. I got to say, you probably have one of the most difficult jobs in our city. It is really a tough job to be caught in the middle of zoning battles between developers and the common good, and I think you've served us very well in that endeavor. So again, thank you. I really appreciate it. Greg's comment about the Moody and Fitch report, I think, is excellent. I'm glad you brought it up to the public's attention. I think I'm a little upset or disconcerted by some of the calls I get from some of this campaign thing that's going on, as people are saying negative things about the city, its traffic, its, you know, this planning process that's going on, this new city we're building, and I think that report sort of puts the kibosh to a lot of that negative information that's flowing. So thank you for bringing that up, and thank you of the staff for an excellent job allowing us to get that kind of rating. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Well said. Rick?
Yeah. Steve, I recall nine years ago, I was sitting up here as chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and welcoming you to our town, and being an Ohio State grad and knowing you're from Michigan, we had a little discourse about that, and I think I offered you a green tie to get rid of your blue and maize tie, but I want to wish you all the best and, you know, thank you for your service to the town. Very much appreciate that. Also, very briefly, I had the privilege to speak at the Bridge Park groundbreaking last Tuesday, and I'll tell you, you couldn't have found a better day here in Dublin, Ohio. I mean, the weather was fantastic. I mean, it was one of those chamber days. I mean, it truly was. But it was, you know, it was a culmination of five years of hard work, crunching numbers, crunching different ideas, and it was quite an honor to be there speaking on behalf of all of you on council, and we had a good attendance, Dana, and I think everybody was just all excited and looking forward to our future.
Very good. I saw the video, Dana. I was able to tune in on that when I was out of town, and you did a nice job with your comments, and I know Rick did as well, so we appreciate that. I just have a couple items. I'm speaking at the celebration of Columbus State Community and the Ohio University Partnership on Wednesday morning, and that will be a big crew with our good partners from OU, including the president from Harrison from Columbus State Community College, Ricky Hines, Columbus State Community College, the Honorable John Carey, who's chancellor at Ohio Department of Higher Education, and then Dr. Roderick McDavis, who's the president of OU. So that will be a, that will be a nice event. I also am speaking on Thursday evening on behalf of Dublin Community Preschool. I think we're presenting a proclamation. I think it's 40 years of the preschool has been in existence there, and in fact, all three of my children went through there, and served them well, and of course, they're all grown adults now, but they've done a great job for the community. Yeah, indeed. So and also, I'd echo Tim's comments on Herb Jones. Chief Bostic, trustee Bostic and myself visited Herb last fall. He had had a hip replaced, I believe, or knee or hip or whatever, and it was kind of like that Doc Hollywood scene in his room at the rehab center. There were, there must have been 20 people stuffed into that room, and he was holding court. I was waiting for somebody to bring the sweet potato pie, and the nurses telling me couldn't have it. But Herb, he was ornery as ever, and we're certainly going to miss him and his countenance and all the history that he brought to the city. I think he was a captain in the Township Fire Department for a number of years as well, so I believe that is everything with that. Will stand adjourned.